Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to this evening's meeting. Before we start the festivities, we're gonna have a public hearing. We have a public hearing to consider amending Special Planning District Number One, SPD One, Design Guidelines and Conceptual Development Plan. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor of the amending of the Planning District Number One? Mr. Mendel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'll just quickly, on July 12th, 2018, the Planning Commission reviewed a request by the applicant for an amendment to the Special Planning District Number One. This was specifically amended portions of the site of the project to allow for a specific type of land development that wasn't thought of at the time that the Special Planning District was created, so it helps refine the regulations in the Special Planning District to accommodate not only this development, but future developments which are more consistent with this type of land development, standard practice in real estate development. So, at the July 12th meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the requested amendments to City Council. Went to Finance Committee on August 27th, has had its minimum 30-day public hearing notice period, and is here before the Council for review at this public hearing. Thank you.
Anybody else that wishes to speak in favor? Yes, Pam? Yes, microphone's fine.
Good evening, members of council. My name's Mary Ann Chandler. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Brown, Emodeo and Chandler, which is right over at 109 West Liberty Street. I'm here really for your benefit if you have questions. I know there was a staff report that was very detailed, that was presented to the Planning Commission. We appeared at that meeting, so I didn't know if anyone had any further questions, or if there were members of the public. We did bring a plan of what our proposed concept would be should these amendments go through. And as Mr. Mendel stated, townhomes were always part of the original concept plan in SPD One. All we're requesting is some refinements. As we sat down with the city to talk about our proposed development, it became very clear that there weren't very clear guidelines for attached dwellings. So we just added another layer of guidelines so that when your building department and your zoning department is dealing with any application, any construction plans that come before it, there's not going to be multiple variances which are gonna clog your building department and your BZA. This creates actual guidelines. The other request is simply moving, making District C slightly larger, which actually moves it farther away from the residents that are on Waterbury. But if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Because you always look like you have a question, so I just wanna look at you to make sure you don't. Any questions on this side?
No, sir.
Oh, no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in favor of the amending of the Special Planning District Number One? Alright, I'll close that. Is there anybody that wishes to speak against amending the Special Planning District Number Hearing done, now the public hearing is closed. Alright, I'd like to call the October 9th, 2018 meeting to order. We have some special guests this evening. We have troop number 91646 from Ella Canavan, who are led by Tracy Gabrielson, and if we can have the young ladies go to the microphone and lead us in a pledge of allegiance, that 'd be great. Whenever you're ready.
(Singing) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, great job. Please call the roll.
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Heffinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Parnell KB.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minutes of the regular council meeting of September 24th, 2018, as prepared and submitted by the clerk, be approved.
Second. Discussion on the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell KB.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passed at 7:00.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee prior to the council meeting, and we're gonna meet two weeks from now, Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, no meeting scheduled.
Thank you, Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Ms. President. No meeting scheduled and no report this evening.
Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, but we did have a, I did have a Special Legislation Committee meeting on equality legislation scheduled for October 17th, and I'm going to reschedule that because it's important that everybody that needs to be there, including members of the administration that need to be present when we have this discussion, have the opportunity to attend so that we can have the full input that I think is necessary, and we're not in a hurry. And so, I will be working to come up with another few dates to make sure everyone will be able to attend, and through that then we can, we can work like we always do to have a successful outcome.
Thank you. Streets and Sandbox Committee, Mr. Heffinger?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report and no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you, Water and Utilities Committee, Mrs. Parnell KB.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no meeting scheduled and nothing to report this evening.
Thank you, and Emerging Technologies Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report and no meeting scheduled at this time.
Request for council action, we have several for finance, we have 18-172 budget amendments, 18-173 increased expenditure for PO 2018-0459, Cozing Street Department, 18-174 resolution opposing passengers, State of Ohio Issue One, Chief Kenny, 18-175 rezoned city-owned property 137 West Liberty Street, 18-176 resolution accepting amounts and rates for the Budget Commission, 18-177 fiscal year 2016 chip rehabilitation for 44 Circle Drive, 18-178 amending salaries and benefits code to convert part-time ED Marketing Associate to full-time ED Marketing Manager, 18-179 RFPs for drug screening related professional services, 18-180 state bid purchase of a 2018 Case Superan Loader backhoe from the Water Department, and 18-181 amend ordinance 12417 and amend salaries and benefits code intensive supervision probation grant. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. The homecoming parade this year has been rerouted with the cooperation of the city and the schools due to the construction on East Smith Road between Jefferson and Broadway Street. They generally lined up behind Garfield and that Medina Supply, and with that block being closed, that simply wouldn't work. We also have a increased, as a result of that construction, an increased amount of traffic on the north side of the square because of that same closure, and as a result, the school was helpful in keeping the parade from not coming around the square for just this year. So the homecoming parade is gonna start at the high school lot. It exits on the East Union Street, proceeds south on Spring Grove to Friendship, and then go west on Friendship Street to North Broadway, north on North Broadway to East Union, and then east again on East Union to get back to the high school. And again, this is, this is a very good route that will not further congest the square. It's Friday, October 12th at 6:00 p.m. to not congest the square, as well as to avoid the construction area. On Sunday, some of the activities on the square, Sunday, October 14th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., the Northern Ohio Region Porsche Club of America is holding a rally on the public square from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So there'll be a great number of Porsches up there, and then they have a route that they leave in groups to travel around. The Candlelight Walk, just to give notice of a coming up here shortly, is gonna be Friday, November 16th, Sunday, November 18th, and bicentennial community events coming up on October 20th at 1:00 p.m. at the Medina Library. The Medina Chamber and the bicentennial committee will focus on the long history of manufacturing and industry in the city. And then on October 27th, these are both Saturdays at 10:30 a.m., the bicentennial committee and the Community Design Committee will provide a program on the restoration of the public square for the city. For additional bicentennial or upcoming events, you can go to their website, which is www.madina200.com. And then last but not least, the, I just wanted to make the announcement, for the end of the month, the city trick-or-treat is gonna be Wednesday, October 31st, always October 31st, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's one thing originated with finance, and I'll address it when we get there.
Thank you, Mr. Hubert, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Lieutenant Markham, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. This past Friday, the city, myself and the mayor participated in our Made in Medina County Manufacturing Day. We had over 400 people registered to attend a variety of plant tours. We had 25 tours scheduled throughout 19 companies throughout the county. We had seven companies in Medina participate, Plastipack, Rico Manufacturing, Chickmaster, Fire Dex, Root Candles, Sandridge Food Corporation, and Temper Sealy. So all of the tours were very well attended and sold out, and this was to learn more about manufacturing and what is being made in our own backyards. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, Planning Committee Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Chief Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item. I'd like to let everyone know, this Saturday, October 13th, between 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., the fire department, we have our annual open house. A lot of fire apparatus, we got two helicopters coming in, and plenty of food, and we hope to see everyone there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just quick update from the REC, the next REC Advisory Board meeting will be on Thursday, October 18th at 7:30 a.m. at the REC Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Quick update on our active projects. US 42 corridor, all lanes are open, however, there are going to be daily lane closures as small portions of the project are completed over the next couple of weeks. Our annual concrete street repair program is well underway, with its various street removal and replacements throughout town. We appreciate everyone's patience and cooperation in those areas. And East Smith, the water line is complete and in service. Storm sewers should be completed this week, and beginning next week, we'll begin pavement removal and replacement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Notice of communications and petitions, there's none. Unfinished business, we have none. Introduction of visitors. Members of the Republic will be afforded the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable timeline of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Well, we got a couple, wait. Okay, you can lead us off.
Good evening, Mr. President and council. My name is Matt Wieterhold. On behalf of Main Street Medina, I would like to thank you for your consideration of the revitalization district upon which you'll be voting this evening. It's an important economic development tool for the city, and will definitely help in the redevelopment of the area just south of the historic district, which as you may have heard, is now part of the Main Street Medina service area. So we thank you very much for your consideration and hope to see its approval. Secondly, I'd like to remind residents that it is Restaurant Week. From October 5th to the 20th, 17 local restaurants are having special deals on different meals, so please shop local and eat local. And finally, as the mayor said, 34th Candlelight Walk is coming up. It is November 16th to the 18th. It's always the week end before Thanksgiving, so it is a bit early this year. It is just five and a half weeks away, so fill your belly and ho, ho, ho.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, city council. We and our junior girl scout troop 91646 from Ella Canavan Elementary. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. Floating in the Pacific Ocean is an island of garbage. Larger than the size of the United States. Ninety-nine percent of all the garbage is plastic, and all it contains. 1.8 trillion pieces of plastic. The wildlife is affected. Fish, birds and water mammals get tangled in the trash, or even eat the trash, and it becomes part of our, becomes part of everyone's food chain. Regulating bags can't stop harmful impacts to the ocean, rivers, lakes, forests, and the wildlife that lives in them. Reducing bags used can also slow down the filling up of the landfills. Very few of the 100 billion single-use plastic bags used in the United States each year are recycled. Some can't even be recycled. The U.S. EPA estimates less than 5% of plastic bags are recycled. In 2010, volunteers in California picked up about 65,000 plastic bags littered along the state beaches and rivers during the Coastal Commission's annual cleanup day. Plastic bags were 7.4% of all the trash collected that day. The third most common item, now they have laws against using them. In 2016, the number of littered plastic bags collected dropped by 63% in California. In 2017, the number of plastic bags collected continued to drop down to 3.1% of items picked up. This is proof that these bans on bags can work. Oregon has many similar plastic bag bans after talking with the mayor of McMenville, Oregon. Last week, we know that it is changing people's habits, and people are using bags or bringing their own bags to stores. Medina could be a leader in the Midwest by passing an ordinance similar to the Bag at Bedore ordinance that is passed in McMenville, Oregon. Our troop would like to ask council for considering researching and eventually proposing a similar ordinance for a city of Medina. Thank you to Medina City Council for your thoughtful consideration on the important issue and future health of our planet.
Thank you. You girls did a great job in researching that issue. We appreciate all your efforts, and as far as an ordinance or some kind of law to be passed in the city of Medina regarding any kind of plastic bags, the process we have is we'll have to have a request for council action, they call it, and then once the request for council action is submitted for council, it goes to a committee to look at it. Now, that committee in this case, since it's a new law, would be Mr. Lamb. He could look at that issue. Now, it seems like what's been happening is that at least some of the businesses around that have plastic bags have become more aware of the dangers of plastic bags, and have been hopefully taking it upon themselves, not just the law making them do it, to be more responsible with their, the plastic bags that they generate. And one of the largest ones, I think, would be Walmart. They have a lot of stores and a lot of plastic bags, and I think that more communities are becoming aware of that, and hopefully they'll be using less. I know my wife carries her own bags at a grocery store. So, I think more and more people will be doing that, but we appreciate your efforts, and we will take that under consideration and maybe put a request for council action in so we can discuss it, and maybe you guys can be involved in a discussion. Wouldn't that be great?
Yeah.
Alright. We appreciate all your efforts, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Erica Griffin, representing the Auditor's Office. Just a few items tonight. We recently started putting some of our forms online. They can actually be signed and submitted online. We started with the homestead exemption for senior citizens, disabled persons, and the new Veterans Disability Program. We also put the special assessment search on there, and that allows them to sign it, to submit it, and then we can sign our signatures and return it to them. Part of going paperless. And then in January, we will be adding the board of revision form. It's ready to go, we're just not gonna release it until that timeframe because we can't accept them before the first day in January that we go back to work. Also, I wanted to talk a little bit about the skimmers that we're finding. We found another one. It was on our homepage. Just be aware when you use it, go into the gas station, that it just seems to be happening more and more right here in Medina County. We let you know as soon as we find it, but it's usually been on there for, you know, several days before we become aware of it. We still have data collectors out, collecting data for the 2019 reappraisal, and that will affect our 2020 tax bills. They will leave a door hanger letting you know who was there and why, and unless they specifically write on there that they have questions, there's no need to call the office. They're just letting you know who was on your property when you weren't there that day. Lastly, we'll be creating our tax bills towards the end of December, normally between December, I'm sorry, between Christmas and New Year's. We can give estimates based on new construction value and the new values on the new properties that were built in the last year to 18 months. So if they call in, we'll be able to give them estimates only until those tax bills are created in December. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council? Okay, introduction and considerations of ordinances and resolutions. We have ordinance 14518, and ordinance authorizing the increase in expenditure to Orion Equipment Innovations LLC to $34,000 for the street department.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Pacoli.
Thank you, Ms. President. This ordinance will increase our current purchase order with one of the vendors. We purchase snowplow parts and cutting edges as we prepare our fleet for this winter season.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell KB.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 145-18 passes 7:00.
Resolution 14618, a resolution donating 16 OptiPlex computers to Medina City Schools.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mayor Hamwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the city, for a number of years, we're on a four-to-five-year rotation for our computers on the desks, and by law, the only way for the city to dispose of property is through either public auction or to transfer to another public entity, in this case, the schools. If we would take these to auction, we'd get pennies on the dollar, and by letting the schools use them for a period of years, and then taking them to auction, there's really no value loss because we get so little at the auction, so we respectfully ask council to authorize this. We've done this for the past probably five years, if not longer.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
Because my employer is the recipient of these computers, I will be abstaining this evening.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell KB.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Abstain.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Resolution 146-18 passes, 68 is one abstention.
Ordinance 14718, ordinance authorizing the increase of the expenditure to Lake County Sewer Co. to $65,000 from the street department, for the street department.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Pacoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance will allow our purchase order to be increased and continue the necessary repairs on our storm sewer system. We've been chipping away at it and reduced the number of infrastructure issues immensely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of ordinance.
Parnell KB.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 147-18 passes 7:00.
Ordinance 14818, ordinance amending ordinance number 14218 passed September 24th, 2018, relative to the expenditure to WatchGuard Video for the purchase of new body and cruiser camera system for the Medina Police Department.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes emergency clause? Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Lieutenant Markham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to correct the amount from the ordinance on September 24th from 81,412.50 to 95,020, and that was due to a clerical error.
Alright, thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell KB.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Motion passes 7:00.
Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell KB.
Yes.
Ordinance 148-18 passes 7:00.
Ordinance 14918, ordinance amending ordinance number 17717 passed December 11th, 2017, amendments to the 2018 budget.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a transfer here for the police camera system purchase. There's an increase to fire, which is dealing with them having more responsibilities now, and then the rest are various pass-throughs of donations and so forth that we received and need appropriation to be able to spend.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell KB.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 149-18 passes 7:00.
Ordinance 15018, ordinance designating a revitalization district within the city of Medina.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion? Mr. Mendel? Is that you? Who is it?
Ms. Marshall.
Oh, Ms. Marshall. You don't even have the mic by you. You had me all wondering who am I gonna call on.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. President. So, this request is to form a community revitalization district in our downtown and surrounding downtown area. And you may recall that we started researching this last August in the Economic Development Committee when we had Justin Starlin from the Worcester Chamber of Commerce come and talk to our group about their efforts in forming the revitalization district and the sort of features, advantages and benefits. Following that, we had a Main Street Medina Business Development Committee with Sandra Hall in October, and so around that time, we got serious about pursuing this as an[1702.26] this as an economic development tool. And through the Main Street Medina Business Development Committee, we turned, we decided that this would be a goal for two thousand and eighteen to try to form this district. In order to do so, because this is set up by state statute and liquor permit definitions are also part of the Ohio Revised Code, we had to work with our state legislators in amending some verbiage to allow Medina County to participate. Councilwoman Laura Parnell Cavy is also part of this committee and attended the meeting with the legislators requesting their assistance, which they, we asked them if they could do that by the end of this year. And fortunately, they were able to pass it early this spring. So the revitaliz, so what is the revitalization district? It's basically a bounded area that includes or will include a combination of entertainment, retail, educational, sporting, social, cultural, or arts establishments within close proximity, proximity to hotels, restaurants, retail sales, and that type of thing. As I mentioned, it was created by state statute to assist in the redevelopment of municipalities having a population of less than one hundred thousand. When declared by the municipal legislative authority, the division of liquor control may, where the number of existing D-five permits within the municipality exceeds that, which would be allowable under the population quota restrictions for that permit, issue the newly created D-five L liquor license, which is what we're, what we're trying to do here. To permit establishments located within that, and we're, we're forming eighty-six point seven acres, located within that district in which the sale of food and meals constitutes for not less than seventy-five percent of the total gross annual receipts. The issued permits are limited to one permit for every five acres of land in the district and not more than fifteen total permits within that district. So what we're proposing is no more than fifteen permits for the eighty-six point seven acres. In order to form this, a private sector partner had to come forward. And so we had received, the mayor had received the application from Patty and John Stahl. And as you know, they have been involved in the redevelopment of a historic building, formerly the Key Bank, and now known as PJ Marley's Restaurant and Pub, which received the Main Street Medina Award for the best commercial restoration in two thousand and sixteen. So they had put forth the request to the mayor. And when we met with council at the finance meeting, we had originally proposed eighty acres. And then at the finance meeting, council requested to increase that footprint, which we then amended that. And John and Patty Stahl also amended their application to reflect the increase in the, in the eighty-six point seven acres. As you all are aware, our square locations have been occupied at one hundred percent occupancy, yet there's still a desire for businesses to locate here. Implementing the revitalization district will give us another tool to attract additional restaurants as we work towards redevelopment opportunities in our downtown area. What's nice about this program is once this district is formed, these D-five L permits can only be transferred within the geographic boundaries of the revitalization district in which it was issued, and it shall not be transferred outside the geographic boundaries of the district. Currently, at the state liquor control for the city of Medina, there are only two, or I'm sorry, there's only one D-five permit available, and two applications are on file, which means one applicant will not be successful in receiving that. So that means that that person would have to buy a liquor permit on the open market outside of the city of Medina, request to have it transferred in with council's blessing. We've done that in the past, but it is very costly and exorbitant for businesses to buy those liquor licenses as they can be tens and thousands of dollars. With this tool implemented, with this district implemented, the fee for that license will be the standard two thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars. So that will level the playing field.
Thank you.
And I think that's it. I don't know if there's any questions. And obviously, Matt spoke to it. We've had letters of support from Main Street, Medina Chamber of Commerce, and Medina County Economic Development Corporation.
No, that was, I mean, it all boils down to we're able to get more liquor permits.
Yes.
All right, so there you go. Anybody else have any questions? Clerk, please call the role in adoption of the ordinance.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lam?
Yes.
Parnell Cavy?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance one fifty dash eighteen passes seven zero.
Council comments. Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like, very briefly, like to thank all the city staff and their, their employees for a remarkable job that you did this, this summer, as you always do. But I, I just constantly hear comments how beautiful the city is, how safe the city is. Kudos to all of you. And I know we've got a prediction of a, of a hard winter coming up, and it won't be long, you know, before those leaves are going to start to fall. So we're sure everybody's going to work just as hard as they always have to keep Medina the place that, that we've all become accustomed to. Other than that, just be kind to one another. Thank you.
Additional council comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rose?
Thank you. I too was able to participate in the Made in Medina County last week. I spent some time at Fire Decks. I got to follow a pair of turnout pants all the way through. And I'd like to give a shout out to Lauren, Norrie, Cheryl, and Kelly for showing me the intricacies of their jobs. And don't worry, the pants are going to San Antonio, so our guys will be safe. No, but no, I don't mean that on the quality of their product. What they do there is, is absolutely fascinating. And they do the, the quality of the work. They wouldn't let me touch them. So they were professionals that made them. And they, they, they did a, it's, it's amazing what goes through to keep you guys safe. And the, the pride of, of ownership of each pair of those pants that the employees did. I'm impressed, and my hat's off to Fire Decks and everything they do for, to keep our firefighters safe.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.